Order, it's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held May 20th, 2014 at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeifer?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Harrowkey, Councilmember Carrison, Councilmembers Pratt are all there.
Thank you. Thank goodness we barely have a forum. Thank you all that could attend tonight for being here, I appreciate it. Okay, the next item is pledge of allegiance and we have Shayler Dowling with us tonight to lead us in the pledge. And Shayler is the president of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Council and has done a great job this year. She'll be graduating, she's a senior, and as she tells me, she's planning to attend Yavapai College. And so, you were going to share a little bit of information, or did I steal your thunder? But we have another thing that we're going to talk about too, a little bit here, so.
Like she said, my name is Shayler Dowling, also the daughter of Councilman Jesse Dowling. I currently just finished my last day of high school today and I'm graduating on Friday. I've been in CYC, the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission, for four years. I was asked by the, by Madam Mayor to fill out an application and I got in as an alternate and four years later I became the president. This year we've made a lot of improvement and I'm sad to have to leave at the end of the summer, but I know that there's good people and it's going to be left in good hands.
Good, you've been mentoring others, right?
Yeah.
And then we're going to talk a little bit about the bike ride and a special request that you had.
So should I do the pledge of allegiance first, or the bike ride?
Go ahead and do that, this first, if you'd like.
The MS bike ride that my dad attended with his team was on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and on Saturday, I believe, a cyclist lost their life in the ride while going up Cornville Road, I believe, and they got in an accident and they didn't make it. So I would like there to be a moment of silence for the cyclist who was kind enough to give their time to an organization that is helping my mother with MS.
Okay. We're going to release the pledge, just this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Best wishes on your new adventures. Oh Shayler, I guess, I was thinking we didn't do this, but we did. So, we have for you, we have the City Council, a present, thank you for your good citizenship. So, thank you very much. Okay, Council, make sure that your mics are on, please. So the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought before the council, brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Councilmembers, Madam Mayor, council members, you'll notice over the next couple of weeks that a lot of our traffic signs, street signs in the city will be replaced. This is through a grant, through ADOT, to replace signs that are beginning to lose kind of reflective ability. So that's a great opportunity for the city. You'll also notice that if you're down in Phoenix, that a partnership between the Chamber, Old Town Association, and the CDC, we actually have a couple of billboards down there on I-10 advertising cottonwood and old town cottonwood. So if you're down in Phoenix, take a look for them. We're also leasing space on a billboard on Highway 260 to advertise our events such as Thunder Valley Rally and Rhythm and Rips. So those will be up shortly. We also will be hosting, I think this may be the fourth year in a row that we're hosting Operation Graduation over at the rec center Friday night. So several of our employees will be helping out with that as well. And I'll let, Tim Alinsky probably wants to talk about the SHIPO visit, so.
Oh sure.
That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so we did have members from SHIPO, that's State Historic Preservation Office down in Phoenix, to come up and visit us last Wednesday, last Wednesday, for the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. So, the City of, the City of Cottonwood has a Historic Preservation Commission, it was formed about three years ago and we just got our CLG status, which is Certified Local Government Status, so SHIPO came up to kind of give us a meet and greet and offer any support that we have. So hopefully with their, with their support, the Cottonwood Historic Preservation Commission will hopefully get some grant funding to make some things happen, particularly upgrading our survey. So we have a survey of historic properties in Cottonwood and SHIPO can help us find a consultant and get that survey updated and some other things too. So it was a good visit, took them on a quick, very quick walking tour of Old Town with the mayor. And then they had a meet and greet here at 5:00 with some food and they met with the Cottonwood Historic Preservation Commission and then they attended our meeting as well.
Answered a lot of good questions that the commission had. Okay, Vice Mayor.
My granddaughter Heather Pfeifer is graduating with Shayler on Friday and I don't, I've lost count of how many children, grandchildren have gone through Mingus, so I don't dare give that count, but she's also going to graduate on Friday.
Wonderful. Congrat, give her our congratulations.
Thank you.
Last time I saw her, I think she was about 13.
Yes.
It's been a while.
Time flies.
It does. And, Mr. Dowling?
I guess I have an update. The event that I've been sort of giving updates about, the training for the MS ride over the weekend. On the positive notes, our team was actually in the top 10 fundraising teams and we're currently at $6,270 raised. The team rode a total of about 725 miles, 130 of those from our own Steve the Accidental Century Beast Horton, who ended up doing 100 miles on Saturday.
Wow.
For road closure and redirection, as well as having a new understanding of the cyclist's love of Highway 260.
We've chosen it.
There you go. We met a lot of great teams. Also, we have Baron Najad is in the back there, she rode both days, 50 the first day, 30 the second, so.
Wow.
Cranked it out.
80 miles, that's awesome.
I've quickly learned that if you surround yourself with successful and great people, you will be successful too, so that's the key to the team. We met a lot of other great teams and riders, there was another team that we needed to give a shout out to, which was Team Wingman out of Texas, I don't remember if it was San Antonio or Austin.
San Antonio.
Out of San Antonio, they drove 2,200 miles to ride 150. One of their members actually has MS and rides with it. Another member had a wife at home with MS, similar to my situation. So we did make sure they got a Team Ride for Wife t-shirt to take back to her. They were very helpful and great guys, they took care of Steve out there on the course. And also the local and regional police, they deserve recognition for outstanding job directing traffic, even giving encouragement, I believe I had our own Roger Scaram pull over and make sure I was okay when I was over at a stoplight waiting for traffic. And aside from the unfortunate and terrible accident that took place, it was an amazing weekend and I can just hope it will lead to safer weekends for riders in the future and a cure for MS someday.
Thank you very much, very touching report. You have anything to add, Mr. Horton?
No, I think Councilman Dowling is headed perfectly.
Okay, so anybody else? I just have a couple of things. On May 10th, the stewards of public lands cleaned up Mingus Avenue from where the Vervno or the birding folks clean up the county piece by the bridge and we took the piece from there up till Cornville Road. And we're going to try to do that several times a year. As clean as it really looked from the road, it was surprising how much stuff we picked up. And I'd like to thank the city for picking up the bags on Monday and that really spoiled us because we're used to having to haul our own stuff to the dumps, so thank you very much, appreciate that. The primetime fair was held and maybe the vice mayor could share a little bit of information about that. Do you have anything special you want to share?
Most of the comments that we got on the survey were that they liked the location, they want us to do it again next year instead of waiting two years and have all the booths set up exactly the way they were because the flow of people, it was really smooth and they all got along real well and one would bounce off the other. It was, it was a really good primetime fair, we had a lot of good comments.
It was excellent and lots of fun too. I ended up visiting that day for a couple hours with different people, it was like, I was only going to stay, you know, 15 minutes or something, but it was very enjoyable. And a lot of good booths, a lot of good information for seniors, so. And then we had the Ride for Wife fundraiser, I think we've had that since our last meeting at the rendezvous in Old Town Riot. And that was a lot of fun, Jesse's dad, Ed Dowling sang. And in fact, I have a real nice video I need to upload of that afternoon. May 13th, I met with, or Doug and I and who else met with Salt River Materials Group, oh, Alvin Stump. And they were, they just had a lot of questions about Highway 260, they hadn't really been in the loop yet and so we just discussed, Alvin, Alvin explained, you know, what was happening, what the communities had agreed on and so they, you know, offered some suggestions and it's kind of, you know, if you recall, the whole bypass was created, I read about this in the general plan, created for those trucks to get around cottonwood. And now they're right in the middle of everything again and they have five roundabouts and two miles to traverse. So of course I understand why they were concerned about the future highway too. We discussed SHIPO. On May 15th, I attended the Gateway Greens Open House and that is a project that's being done, just, I guess we're going to call it kind of the gateway to Old Town. And Rene Redosia is the architect and has, has done this project and the idea of the project is the walkable communities where you work and live in the same place and you don't have to drive everywhere. So hopefully with our infill development, we'll see more of those kinds of projects. I was also invited by Officer Watson's son, Will, to attend the FFA banquet. And that was really fantastic to see all those young people and all the things that they've accomplished and their leadership, so that was a great honor. On May 17th, the vice mayor and I and council member and city manager, Doug Bartosz, attended the dedication of the bronze hero statue at the police department. Ed Kyler was there, some other folks. And that was very impressive and it was a really fantastic ceremony that I truly enjoyed. So the next project that they're working on is a bronze statue of the Canines that have served. And I think that'll be a really great project. The whole thing was funded through private donations, businesses, and individuals. There were no taxpayer dollars used. May 21st, on Thursday, at 5:00 PM, there is a rite of silence meeting at 5:00 PM. And is Hez here, did I see Hez?
Yes.
Hez, is that, does that start at Maverick or end at Maverick?
It ends at Maverick.
Okay, it starts at Riverfront, the back lot of Riverfront Park and goes to the Maverick Station at 5:00 PM still?
Correct.
Okay, so I think in light of the tragedy that the community bore this weekend, hopefully we'll have quite a few riders for that ride for silence. And then on Wednesday night, tomorrow night, there will be a coffee talk with the mayor at the rec center at 6:00 PM and I would invite everyone to come and share your thoughts with the mayor. And, and probably a council, or not council, hi. Somebody's phone is ringing.
It's a catchy tune.
So it's an opportunity for the community to come and share your thoughts and I'm trying to do these, I have a volunteer named Jesse, Jason, Jason Valencia is helping plan these meetings and we're trying to do one in the morning one month and one in the evening the next month so that hopefully it will accommodate more citizens that way. So come and share your ideas for a better Cottonwood. That's my report. And we'll go on to the next item, which is proclamations. We have, we're proclaiming May is Older Americans Month. Whereas the City of Cottonwood includes over 3,600 citizens ages 60 and older, and whereas the City of Cottonwood is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives, and whereas the older adults in the City of Cottonwood have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations. And whereas we recognize the value of injury prevention and safety awareness in helping older adults remain healthy and active, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals young and old by emphasizing the need to take action to safeguard themselves from unintentional injuries where they may live, work, and socialize, providing information on avoiding leading causes of injury for older adults, falls, motor vehicle related incidents, suffocation, medication overdose, and fire or burns, helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May 2014 to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community. And I ask that this be put on and I'd like to thank Matt for assisting with it, you did a great job, thank you very much. And I serve on the council, or the governor's council on aging and I will take this to my next meeting and present it there also. Okay, the next item is presentations. We have a plaque of appreciation from the Arizona SciTech Committee to Lucas Hamilton for the work done building and maintaining the SciTech website for the 2014 SciTech Festival. And Rudy?
Sorry, Mayor. We were talking back there. Well, Mayor, Council, as you know, we had a, we had a young man that was helping us out with the SciTech Festival. We were struggling initially because we did not have any way to, any personnel to do or, or some of the marketing we wanted to do and one of the marketing ideas that we had was to develop a website. We had Lucas Hamilton, a young man, 16 years old from Mingus High School stepped up to the task through, through their school and developed the website, though hosted on ours. He built the website, maintained the website, put all the logos and a lot of information on there, including pictures and some videos and a lot of news flashes from SciTech, Arizona SciTech Festival. And if anyone hasn't seen it yet, you ought to visit it, it's www.vvsitech.org. And you know, this young man did a lot of workforce and all was, was all volunteer and it's, it's very rare that you'll find an individual, especially this young, that is willing nowadays to give so much of his time. And I know I bugged him constantly and sent him boatloads of emails and pictures and stuff and he never balked, he just went ahead and bowed his business and did all this workforce for free. And we thought it was only appropriate that we honor him some, some way and we have a, a small token of our appreciation from the SciTech Festival, all different members at the SciTech Festival, and especially our, our council and our mayor who brought this whole group together, so. Lucas.
So we have a plaque to give to you, we're going to put it up here. We just want to come up and help present it. And also, would you like to introduce your mother?
I did picture it, but.
She's shy. What I would like to say is that we knew we needed a website and we didn't really have the time staffed it. So that was the great thing about this group was somebody said, well, we need a website and Rudy said, well, you know, we could help with space on the server and, but I don't really have staff right now that can do this job. And so Paul Price, Superintendent Mingus, and Jennifer Chilton, the principal, said, well, we'll think about that. And so they thought about it and they found a willing volunteer who did a fantastic job. So we're here tonight to present this plaque to you and thank you and your mom who also was the building there. Your taxi, my. Okay, so thank you very much for all that you did.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. And our next SciTech meeting is going to be June 2nd?
Sure.
Is it the 2nd or the 3rd? It's a Monday.
Monday, whatever it is.
Which, it's a Monday, the first Monday in June, where we'll be talking about the 2015 SciTech Festival. Okay, the next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. Unfortunately, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action and that is a state law that we cannot respond to or have a conversation about it. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. And we have Ed Kyler tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Ed Kyler, 15-year resident of the City of Cottonwood. I would like to probably insult the council a little bit, but you made an error in judgment in the logo you approved sometime back.
In the what, I'm sorry?
The logo.
Oh, the logo, okay.
Yes. Two quote marketing people with the white background on it and the lack of color, the term usually used is pop and believe me, folks, this doesn't pop. I have discussed this with friends and acquaintances, I have yet to find anybody that likes it. I discussed it briefly during the informational and update part of the Planning and Zoning Commission last night and speaking for myself and a couple of the others that were there, we really don't, don't care for it. So what I'm thinking is if it's at all possible for the council to reconsider this project and maybe either tweak this thing to make it look like a wine glass, I've never seen a wine glass without a stem and I don't believe I've ever seen leaves shaped like hearts on a cottonwood tree. It, yeah, sorry folks, it's just not there. So based on that, the Verdi Independent, over the last few days since you approved this, ran one of their polls and today they wound it up and printed the, printed the results. They had four categories, the current logo, the approved logo, the alternate logo, and of course the one item I think should be on every ballot in the world, none of the None of the above got 13%. The alternate logo, 35%. The current logo, 50%. The approved logo, 2%, a total of four votes out of the 182 people that participated. I would really think that we should collectively go back and revisit this because it just isn't there. The other item that comes along with this is, it's a feeling that amongst merchants that I've talked to and others that we're putting too much emphasis on wine country and not enough on the rest of the economic engine of the, of the Verdi Valley included. And as far as I'm concerned, we are the heart of the Verdi Valley. The heart of the wine country, that's yet to be determined because it's such a young industry in our valley. I would like to see you revisit this and maybe we can come up, maybe tweak- I would like to see you revisit this, and maybe we can come up, maybe tweak the alternate one, or even the one that you approved, tweak it so that it, to use the word again, pops. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Williams?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, my name is Bob Williams of Cottonwood. I would like to second Mr. Kyler's remarks with regard to the new logo. I apologize for not being here last week to express my concerns. It sort of popped up on me. I really didn't realize it was even going on until I saw the article in the newspaper after the fact. No doubt the wine industry, as Mr. Kyler says, has been a very favorable economic impact on this community. Nobody's questioning that, but I think Cottonwood is so much more than just the wine industry. It's got so many things to offer, to live here, to retire here, whatever, just to visit here, but there's a lot more than just the wine industry. And I too fear that the community as a whole is getting a little bit of a tunnel vision regarding the wine industry and the Old Town. And we need to stress this is a large community, it's got many wonderful facets that need to be dealt with. As we, we discussed that last night a little bit among us, and again, I think the consensus strongly was nobody was really happy about it. And we just need to pass that along to you as citizens, I think, and I would strongly encourage you to give some reconsideration to that logo, and I'm not an artist, but I think we can do a lot better than that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else like to speak tonight to call to the public? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to the minutes, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second. Mr. Ilinski made the motion, the Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. The consent agenda is the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is new liquor license applications submitted by Denise L. Maraga, owner of Maraga's Authentic Mexican Food, located at 1124 North Main Street in Suite A. Item number two is a new liquor license application for Jared M. Rapinski, applicant for Ancient Pillars Traditional Greek Cuisine, located at 1001 North Main Street. Item number three is Wine Festival liquor license applications for Alcantara, Arizona Stronghold Vineyards, Burning Tree Cellars, Cellar 433, Prieta's Vineyard, Gallivant Vineyard, O'Gallivant Cellars, Grand Canyon Winery, Havelina Leap Estate Vineyard, Oak Creek Vineyards, Page Spring Cellars, Passion Cellars, Pillsbury Wine Company North, and Music Festival, whoops, and Stagestop Vineyards for the Tilted Earth Wine and Music Festival scheduled for June 21st, 2014, at Riverfront Park. Are there any items here that you would like to pull to discuss?
Fourth item.
The fourth?
No, 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 there is a fourth item, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, the fourth, I thought that was separate. Agreement with Google to set up a governmental YouTube account in order to post educational videos for the public. Are there any items that council would like to pull off for discussion? Are there any items that a member of the public wants to pull off for discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve this item, Jenny.
Second. Okay, Mr. Dowling made the motion, the Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. And there's a couple of items on the list that probably should have gone into the consent agenda because they were actually approved back in January. So if you want to come up and discuss items number three and four real quick, and we'll just get those out of the way.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm going to turn this over to Commander Isinga, as this is his department, and he is the one completely behind all of this. So with your indulgence, Commander Isinga will handle this for the Police Department.
Thank you. Commander Isinga.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. The items three and four are in regard to part of our technology budget, which the council had already approved as part of the communication center design and build. So item number three is for radio console furniture. That would be in the amount of $108,767.03 for the furniture, and again, that's all part of the technology budget. And then item number, if you want to handle these together or separately?
Together.
Then item number four is for the radio equipment itself. We're going with a company called Zetron versus Motorola, and that item is in the amount of $248,887.07. And we're just requesting approval to spend that money for those items.
Okay, so council already approved this back in January. So do I hear any discussion on this? Any comments from members of the public on it? If not, I would entertain a motion. And we can just sort of go bring, do them both.
Okay, so I move to approve the purchase of radio console furniture from Zibix in the amount of $108,767.03, and I also...
It's okay, you could take time to get there.
To approve the purchase of radio communications equipment from Zetron. Who names these companies? In the amount of $248,887.07.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. And that was Councilmember Dowling made the motion, and Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Ilinski made the motion, and Councilmember Dowling seconded it. Okay, thank you very much. All right, the next item is a public hearing regarding the city's proposed general plan for 2015-2025, and this is under new business. And these items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. This particular item is not slated for action, it's a hearing for the public. Mr. Scully?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'd like to give an overview of the process that we've gone through up to this point to get with the general plan, and then give a brief summary of each of the chapters, and then open it up for questions. This goes back to almost two years, to the summer of 2012. The staff began doing research on the background part of the plan. In the fall of 2012, there was a series of public visioning workshops that were looking at the full range of topics that people were interested in, and there was interactive workshops and a number of other presentations to the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission in that period as well. Beginning in January 2013, we had a general plan advisory committee that was formed, and they were meeting twice a month. They had some long afternoon meetings and went over each element in detail. Small but diverse group that was willing to have very lively discussions, and they really helped a great deal in shaping and forming the plan. There's three of the members here tonight from the advisory committee. Throughout 2013, the Planning and Zoning Commission had the general plan elements on their agendas at every meeting, so they were also going through that. The city's website has had information about the meetings and updated parts of the plan and the maps from 2012, from the beginning, and it's been updated many times. We also had additional meetings with the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as ongoing with the advisory committee and council on planning zoning. In 20, this year, as part of the requirements under the state statutes, we sent out the wider notification. There's a series of agencies that are required to get notified of the process, that would be the neighboring communities, the county, Northern Arizona council governments, as well as the city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. In addition, we had over sixty other agencies and organizations that were notified through email and getting links to this process and invited to participate. That included other local, state, and federal government agencies, community groups, Chamber of Commerce, homeowners associations, conservation groups, and the list is everybody we could think of that we had any kind of interest. We were sending them in notification and inviting them to be involved. There was also open house events that were held at the recreation center in the evening, providing information, and many staff people were involved from the city also. And then, as part of the requirements under the state statute, there's a required public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then this would be the required hearing under the process with the city council, even though all the meetings have been public meetings and had input. This is just part of that required final step. Last month, the Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing, and they also had recommended approval of the plan and wanted that to be forwarded. Since that time, we also added a new element, which you're seeing for the first time tonight. And they heard that last night, which was the economic development element, and I'll talk more about that, but they also recommended that for approval as well.
But we didn't, we haven't read it yet. I mean, correct?
Well, explain that. I'll explain how all the elements, chapters...
Okay, because I looked for it in two versions, and I didn't find it.
Yeah, that should be in there. So, under the state statute, a city the size of Cottonwood is required to have, there's seven elements that are required. That would be the land use, circulation, open space, growth area, environmental planning, water resources, and cost of development. In addition, in Cottonwood, it was decided to have a housing element, a historic preservation element, and as well as now an economic development element added. Just to summarize what each of these are involved and what's been changed and what's key features in there, the land use element includes the land use map and the classification system. In this element, there's more of an emphasis now on recommendation for using the subarea planning process to go back in future years and look at the details of different neighborhoods and subareas and commercial areas, and work with the residents where the interest is to get into a greater level of detail. So this is one of the key recommendations there. In the circulation element, there's far greater emphasis on multimodal transportation. That would be, in addition to vehicles, bicycle, pedestrian, and transit. In addition, there's a discussion about supporting more innovative approaches to solving circulation and transportation issues, not just building more roads, but making them more efficient, making them work for more, for the land uses. The open space element also includes a section with Parks and Recreation that's not required, but that was included in there, describes all the different facilities and programs that the city provides, and some of the goals there as well. The growth area element is, asks you to identify areas that have, are suitable for more efficient growth. It's not just asking just for growth for the sake of growth, it's saying where are areas that are suitable for mixed use and efficient use of infrastructure. That area also was the place where we thought it was appropriate to talk more about the state lands and the annexation proposal for the state trust lands. So that's, that includes upfront information about what the city's done and what the position is there. The environmental planning element asks you to address effects of development on air quality, water quality, and natural resources. We've also talked about recycling and energy conservation and sustainability issues there. The water resources element is probably the most technically thorough element in the plan. That was, came from the city's Natural Resources Director, Tom Whitmer, who was able to provide a great deal of information. And there's a tremendous emphasis in there about water conservation and all the programs that the city's supported and is taking a lead on with the state-of-the-art reclaim water facility and other programs to come with a comprehensive water conservation program. But that asks you really to tie back in these water issues to how it fits as an integrated document and addresses the rest of the plan. Cost of development is really just asking you to identify mechanisms to help finance the public facilities that are affected by development. So it's really kind of just a list, it's more of a resource list of the types of approaches you use to finance development bonding and that type of thing. We've also included a housing element. This is a very much a different approach than the existing housing element, which was based on the housing strategy from twelve years ago, which was focused more on first-time homeownership and housing affordability. This expands that, and really, it's really more of the standard now in housing advocacy to look at more of a diverse range of needs in housing and discuss housing for the way people live in very diverse ways, and more and more different types of approaches there. Historic preservation is a new section, and it really is talking more about the technical parts of the program, the federal programs and the tax incentives, and it's less about the history of Cottonwood in this section, and more about the tools that are available to support historic preservation. The economic development element, which was mentioned, it came out of an interest in providing that balanced view and the overall plan, and it is based on working with Casey Rooney and the Economic Development Program, and it comes out of the Cottonwood's five-year economic development strategy that was adopted and produced in 2009. And so we went there and adapted that and the structure of that, the seven priorities and focus areas. So this really comes out of an existing document that was reformatted. Some of the things were moved around a little bit, but it was meant to not be the starting of program. It's really just talking about what's existing and then how that fits into the overall plan as an, again, as an integrated document. I think those are the main sections of the plan, and what's being asked tonight is to have this required public hearing. Where we go from here is that the timing is to make the November 4th election. We need to have everything done and ready. There's an advance period to get the ballot ready that needs to be completely finished towards the middle of June, which is coming up very quick. And so to stay on that schedule, we'd be looking at coming back in June with a resolution to consider adopting the general plan. So changes can still be made, but the window of opportunity is in days, measured in days, and we can prioritize that if that works. Otherwise, we need to get creative about how we're going to have that final adoption in the next few weeks.
And I think we have it the thir- And I think we have it, the third is, it'll come for a council, the council will be asked to approve it on the third.
My resolution.
And then on the 17th will be the request for an election. And then in November would be the election.
It'll be the general election, November 4.
So members of the public could make comments.
Yes.
For the next few days. So do you have a deadline?
Well, you know, we've been, we've been having these.
You've been taking comments for quite a while.
Year and a half. And we've had it on the website. We've had notices and poster boards in our public buildings, in the rec center, the library.
Really publicized it.
We sent out notices. We had newspaper articles. We've had many, many meetings, public meetings with council, commissions, open houses.
You guys have done very well.
But it becomes a point in time where you have to stop.
Right.
At some point, 10 years from now, there'll be another general plan. And there's, it's a living document. There's things can be amended. It's not, it doesn't end the process for looking forward. There's things that we don't, we don't know yet that aren't anticipated that'll still be able to integrate into.
Exactly.
These objectives in coming years, and there's some things that may, we may decide sound good now, but they may not sound so good in a few years. So those things can be, it is an adaptable document.
The living one. So we, our last plan was 2003. The voters approved it in 2004. Have we had any major amendments? I don't recall.
We had a minor amendment.
A minor, a minor amendment. That's not too bad for 10 years, really.
The school district property, I believe, had a minor amendment. So yeah, minor amendments are things that can be concurrent with a zoning case. There is a higher level of scrutiny to affect that. It may, may not be approvable, but there is a process that allows that. On larger scale, there's a major amended process. And there's some balance between people wanting to have stability and certainty in what, what looks forward, as well as having flexibility to make changes where the changes are reasonable. The process is open in that sense.
Questions or comments, council? Councilmember Garrison, who is absent, was, did have one question that he wanted to share, and that was an enterprise zone. And his concern is that, you know, say like agriculture or any other kind of business in a place that's not really zoned for it, could that business, you know, take care of his product or whatever? And Doug and I talked about this, and it could be like, I guess you're going to bring it back to council?
Yeah, I talked to Councilmember Garrison today and told him that, you know, because he was kind of talking about the entertainment district and this ability to, you know, go in and create cheese or bread or wine or whatever without having to get a special permit for it. And Charlie's done some work on that already, and our plan is to present that to the council at the June work session so we can talk about it. But I don't think it's really going to have much of an impact on the general plan.
It's more a zoning issue.
The general plan doesn't change anybody's zoning.
Right.
Any kind of existing land uses. It doesn't cause any tax increase. It doesn't, it's a, it's a guide for development. Your zoning is still going to tell you what your property rights are.
Exactly.
And we did discuss that issue last night. Actually, it was on the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we started the discussion at that level.
Okay, let's see what else. Andy Grossette called, and he wanted, he couldn't be here tonight as he had another meeting, but he wanted to go on record, especially to thank the staff for all of your work on this plan. And I'd also like to extend my thanks. It's been many, many hours and meetings, and you guys have done a great job on it. And he was very happy with the economic development section that Casey wrote here in the past month or two. Didn't have much, just a couple of weeks, I guess, to do that. And he does feel that the Verde Valley is, or Cottonwood is the economic hub of the Verde Valley and that the plan needs to highlight that. Besides ecotourism and geotourism, which was, I guess, talked about at last night's meeting, he would like to see us add agricultural tourism also, which I guess you guys heard all about that last night, so you know more of the details than I do. And let's see, oh, his other comment was that he thought the goals and objectives should be at the beginning rather than at the end. That's just a matter of technicalities there. And I think that was the comments from others that I had. Mr. Ilinski.
Can I just go over what we discussed when we met with Tom Whitmer? Is that appropriate, or is Charlie going to?
No, go, go right ahead.
I've been plowing through the general plan, and I haven't gotten through the whole thing, but I was, under the water resources, I was, you know, we met with Tom Whitmer and the mayor last week. I know that Cottonwood's leading the charge on a lot of these issues, but I was, I was kind of hoping that maybe under one of the goals and objectives that we could put in there, because this goes so far into the future, you know, 10 years out, 2025, I just feel like that we should maybe consider trying to get our gallons per capita per day down, you know, 5% is what we discussed, just because I'm concerned that, you know, like most others here, that our water resources are finite, and the most that we can do to help that, you know, would help the entire community. But I, I know that we're doing already so much, but I just feel like that could be one step, you know, more, where we have a stated goal of just lowering our GPCD by just 5%. It's not, it's not much, but I think it would make a huge difference.
And hopefully, we'll even do better than that.
And hopefully, we will. But I was just concerned that, you know, after looking through this, how much, you know, how, how much more water we're going to need just as, as the community grows. And it's hard to really, you know, you can't really control that, the growth so much because of the private property that we have in the community. But one thing that we can really make a stated goal is just to try to, you know, collectively lower our gallons per capita per day consumption. Just a thought.
So, Mr. Whitmer, is that a possibility as a goal? You want to come up and share your thoughts on that? And what kinds of techniques could we do to achieve that? Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie. Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, as Tim mentioned, Tim and I and the mayor met last week to kind of discuss this issue specifically. And I had a chance to go back after we discussed, is find out exactly where we really were, because I didn't have the 2013 numbers quite complete yet. During our meeting, I told you our GPCD, which is a total GPCD, which is completely different than a lot of people will publish out there. Many people will do a, what they call just their GPCD, and typically what they will do is they'll take water delivered divided by population served. In any water system, there's a component known as lost and unaccounted for water. It can be actual water that's leaking. It could be water that's going through a meter and not registering it. There's a number of reasons that cause lost and unaccounted for water. Industry standards typically try to be around the 10% or less mark on that one. And a lot of communities will publish a GPCD that doesn't do the total GPCD, which is gallons pumped divided by population served, which is a whole different animal. And in this, you know, as far as Cottonwood's concerned, that is the one that we're really interested in more than anything because of our desire to preserve the river. So when we started publishing a total GPCD of 110, that ranks in the top 1% in the state in terms of municipalities. It's very, very good. In fact, it's almost unbelievable in some cases. But nevertheless, I went back and recalculated the numbers, and we're sitting at a 108 for 2013. So we brought it down. Now, if you go back to 2006, after the first full year of upgrading the systems after we purchased the private water companies, we reduced it by over 25%. Our GPCD, which is total GPCD, which is quite amazing. Now, what really makes that even more amazing is that we had the arsenic, lowering of the arsenic compliance requirements in 2006. That alone uses a little over about 70 acre feet of water just for that program to remove the arsenic from our water system, because unfortunately, most of the groundwater here in the Verde Valley has arsenic in it, and it exceeds in most cases the new standard of 10 parts per billion, which previously was 50 parts per billion prior to January of 2006. You take it, you take that number out, it drops us down even lower, we're down about 106, 107 is where we're at, which is also a, a pretty good thing to understand as well. So if you look at what we've done since 2006 after acquiring the private water companies, we've done an amazing thing. Can we do more? Absolutely. There's always things you can do. Ultimately, at the end of the day, conservation isn't going to get you to the end game with regards to the projected increase in demands that we anticipate occurring here within the Verde Valley. And we're doing things to address that over and above the conservation side of the equation. How much more can we start, or can we reduce our conservation? Well, that's a tough one. When you start hitting the 100 mark, when you're talking total GPCD, you're approaching that limit, because like I said, that's total GPCD is total groundwater pumped divided by population served, and it doesn't matter whether it goes to the hospital, which is a major user of water, or a hotel, or to a swimming pool, or to whatever. It's just total pumped divided by population served. I think that we're going to be coming forward here with a recommendation here this year with regards to what we can do further in conservation and how we can address that. But getting below the 100 mark is going to be tough, really, really tough. There may be only one municipality that I'm aware of that has a total GPCD that's around the 100 mark, and that's Payson. Payson will publish in 85 or in 87, somewhere in there, last time I looked, but they're, again, they're using a gallons delivered divided by population served as opposed to gallons pumped, which is a little bit different animal. Now, to their credit, they have a very low lost and unaccounted for water, which only bumps them up to the high 90 mark. But they've gotten very restrictive in what they do. I like to tell the story, Starbucks wanted to come into Payson, and they were denied coming into Payson simply because they used reverse osmosis in their process for filtering their water. Reverse osmosis wastes water. And so they denied it, so they had to come in with a different filtration method that did not use as much water. That's how restrictive they've, they've become. But, you know, they sit on top of a rock. We at least have a nice alluvial basin where we've got a substantial amount of groundwater. They don't have that luxury. So, I mean, they routinely can run periods, or used to at least, run periods where they ran out of water. Now, they're sitting pretty good right now because they've just now acquired the water rise to C.C. Crankin Reservoir.
Right.
So, just one other point I should bring up. If you look at just what our residents use, if you look at a residential GPCD, the last time I calculated was in 2011, we were sitting right at about 68 at that point in time for residential GPCD, which is really quite good. And I think it's probably less than even since then because our total water demand, our total water pumps since 2006 has been continually going down.
It's something I just feel very strongly about, you know. I am proud that Cottonwood leads the way in many of these areas, and I just think if there's more that we can do than we should, even if we are sitting on, you know, a large amount of groundwater, even, even so, I feel like we should just try to do more.
Oh, and like I said, we are doing more than, we are doing over and above the conservation side of the equation. As most of you are aware, we are in the middle of putting in an injection well to recharge our reclaimed water back into the system. That in and of itself is amazing, what we hope to get out of that, of that project.
We also do Del Monte Wash, so we have a wash that receives water, it infiltrates into the ground. And we really have done a lot. I just wish that, you know, for all of the areas outside of the city and all the private wells, that if we could have as much, you know, collaboration on water use and all of that in those whole areas, the river might not be as impacted as people say it is. But it takes all of us. And that was something that I really was amazed at reading through the plan, was how regional this plan is. And I think that most of the people, or a good portion of the people who are on the committee didn't live in the city. So that was, you know, they had a lot of input into this plan, and I really appreciated that. It's a plan written for the region, really.
I mean, we could, we could definitely shoot for a goal of 100 if you wanted to try and do that. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I just feel like, you know, having a stated goal that City Cottonwood wants to, you know, lessen its GPCD, it speaks to the community that we take it seriously and that we, we're trying to change, you know, the collective consciousness of the community that conservation is vital.
Inside and outside of the city.
Yeah.
Lead by example.
That's really, even, it's really not a large amount, you know, percentage-wise, but I think it just, it's that stated goal that would indicate conservation is vital to our community.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely correct, and it's, it's not a much percentage-wise, but when you start getting to that 100 mark, it's very difficult to get much more out of it when you start talking total.
Because then you're starting to impact your citizens' quality of life?
Well, there's, there's other things.
Their perceived quality of life?
There's that, potentially that. And there's also the issue that now we start impacting the wastewater treatment plant. When your solids get to be too much, it gets very difficult to start moving that sludge around. And unfortunately, when we put the system in here originally, we pump all of ours uphill for some reason. But, I mean, it's worked out really well from the injection standpoint, because where we're injecting now is upgraded to all of our well fields, so, which is very good to know. It's a good thing for us. But it takes a lot of energy to push that uphill.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we, we're close. Like I said, you know, Flagstaff is at 110. Just by comparison, Prescott Valley's sitting around the 110, 115 mark. Prescott's around the 115 to 120 mark, somewhere in there. San Pedro is down, now down to about 123, down Sierra Vista, I should say, not San Pedro, it's Sierra Vista. And those are kind of the, you know, top tier of communities that are out there. And you start getting to the major metropolitan areas, they're way up there. Even though they may state a goal, because they play with the GPCD number quite a bit. You go into Phoenix, for instance, Phoenix will do a GPCD, but they've got this major urban irrigation program that Salt River Project is part of, that doesn't go into their calculations. But even with that, they're still, for a total over 200. Page sits at almost 300. But they're, again, they're mostly hotels. They've got a major tourist influx there. Flagstaff deals with a lot of the same issues. They've got a major influx of tourists that use water but don't get calculated into the GPCD.
Sedona and Jerome all have those issues.
Yeah, we've got, we've got some of that issue here. If we had a lot of hotels and things of that nature, you know, for instance, like I said, Verde Valley Medical Center, that alone uses about 105 to 110 acre feet a year. That's pretty significant. You take, you take Verde Valley Medical Center out of, out of our calculation, and you take the arsenic abatement out of our calculation, we're right about the 100 mark on GPCD.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so a lot of communities that profess to have lower amounts aren't calculating it the way that ADWR would calculate it.
That's correct.
So sometimes you're talking apples and oranges when somebody said their community uses 75 or 80 or 100 gallons.
Right.
They're not calculating it the way that.
They're not calculating the total GPCD.
Officially, that you're supposed to calculate it.
That's, that's correct. I mean, and it's not a bad number to know that they have, because it gives you an idea at least what the residents are using.
Right.
You can actually get an idea of just what they're at, where they're at. But, for instance, the worst place I've seen was a small, they have a whole community called Jedito. They had a loss in unaccounted for water of over 78.
Wow.
You know, that's, 78, yeah, 78%.
It was just, and that's a lot of leaks, right?
That was a lot of leaks there. It was, it was bad.
Leaky infrastructure.
You could always tell where the leaks were, there was green spots, you know, throughout the community.
Yeah. Any other, so council, do you, would you like to try that goal of reducing 5%, 5 more percent, and more if we can? I mean, Cottonwood's always tried to reduce that amount, and will continue to do so, but Councilmember Ilinski is asking us to put that in writing as a commitment and a goal. Does that suit you all?
Goals are good to have.
Yeah.
Okay. Just a real quick question. What would, if we calculated our GPCD, the other. What would, if we calculated our GPCD the other way, what would we come in at there as a reference?
I've never done it. It's going to be around, in the 70 mark.
Well, I appreciate the support on that. You know, I grew up north of Payson on the East Verde and I do remember frequently running out of water. And it, you know, because we ran out of water, we knew that it was in, you know, high demand and it wasn't enough to provide, you know, the whole community. So it just sort of always stuck with me that it is a finite resource and, you know, the best, you know, the most we can do, we should do to protect it.
Growing up in Jerome, I had a nice wash next to my house. It ran great until it fixed all the leaks. Water line to town, so we never ran out, we did, actually we did run out in town a couple times. But I loved that wash.
We can all tell our nightmare stories about water. Back on the farm, our well was 30 feet deep and the cattle yard was up above it, as well as our septic, I think, was above it.
And on my island, we never watered the grass. We'd just dig a small hole and we hit water.
Yeah, you had lots of water. Was it salty in that little hole?
It was sulfur water. It was terrible.
It was brackish, huh? So, water is a precious thing and I think that I'm very proud of Cottonwood for all the things that we've tried to do to impact a brighter future for water issues. And we will continue to do that, I'm sure, at least this council will. Hopefully, future councils will also do that. So, thank you very much.
So, just to clarify, the council's asking for a goal of 5% reduction in the per population use? Is that what I heard?
Per capita, per gallons per capita, per day.
Okay.
Okay, and then I would also let council know that our vision and mission statement that we passed, or have we officially passed that yet? I don't recall if we just gave direction or if it actually was an agenda item.
It's actually on the next agenda.
The next agenda, okay. But anyway, that would be going in there instead of the current one. The one that we worked on at our retreat. And I would also like to thank all the committee members that were on the team. If you were a committee member, I see several of you out there, will you please raise your hand? Okay, so we have Bob Williams, we have Paulette English, I always get the middle name, maiden name all goofed up in there now. And then Steve Estes. I know your name, but...
I don't remember mine either.
Yes, well, they just don't always appear when I need them. So, really appreciate your work on that. I know that you spend a lot of hours, a lot of time, you would get chapters, I guess, or parts of chapters and go through them and make comments. So, there's a lot of you in this policy that we're working on. A lot of your thoughts, ideas, and your concern about the community. You got your signature on it through your time and commitment. So now, we are going to have a public hearing and this is the time for the public to be able to talk about their thoughts and make suggestions. If you would like to, please get one of these and fill them out. If you'd like to share information or your thoughts during the hearing process. And you want to hand that to them, Dr. Bob? They'll probably be bringing one up. So we'd like to hear from everyone who would like to speak. This is a public hearing. So I would open the floor to the public. Okay, and Dr. Richards.
Dr. Bob Richards, resident of Cottonwood, mayor, council members half in the public. Councilman Ilinski, I did read the entire document and it's very extensive and some parts were more interesting to me than other parts. I found some things that I would agree with, but I think that anybody that would read the document from front to back would probably find that. I did want to point a couple of things. You talk about trails and washes, but I would like to see a map that shows where those washes are. You have maps of streets and other, you know, this planned area, that planned area, but I think if you would, it would, it would have helped me to identify where those washes are if that was included in the plan. Also on page 4-39, it talks about improvement districts. And to me, that sounds like a taxing district. And I don't know if it came out of an older document and was just a pass through, or if the city is really considering in the next 10 years to have improvement taxing districts. And if they aren't, I don't see any reason to increase the concern of the citizens if that is not going to be actually occurring in the next 10 years. The same thing I noticed with community parks. We have what I call pocket parks, which are part of an area developments. And those are put in there more as an open space requirement. To me, they serve little purpose as far as getting out there, you know, throwing a frisbee, throwing a football or whatever. And you also talk about community parks of 5 to 15 acres. And I had trouble visualizing where new community parks would be within the city of Cottonwood. And if indeed, again, you know, I would like to see one at the failed development on Office Skyline Drive. In fact, the planning and zoning has not taken down the sign yet in regard to that, but I think that'd be a beautiful community park, but you had to spend money to go and buy that from the property owner. And if indeed, community parks of 5 to 15 acres are not a reality, I don't see a real good reason to have that in there to maybe raise the hopes of the citizens that, hey, we're going to have some community parks in the next 10 years. So I think at times, if you can, if you raise hopes and that isn't going to happen, that's not good. If you scare the citizens by talking about improvement districts when that isn't going to occur, I think that's not good either. A couple of other items. I read on the environmental quality and water quality is voluminous. And we can get more water, I suppose, even if we have to truck it in. But I noticed that there were only four paragraphs devoted to air quality. And I think we need to think about air quality a little bit more. Many citizens that moved to the Verde Valley are retired. They move here not only for warmer temperatures, but also the cleaner air. Many of those retirees may already have pulmonary problems that are aggravated by pollen discharge during certain times of the year. And our population should not be impacted by poor air quality. Unlike water, precious and limited commodity that may be obtained from others than local sources or conserve, air cannot be imported or conserved. It's what we have, it's what we got. So we must protect the air quality with the same vigor as we protect our water quality and sources. And I think that should be important. And when I think about the state trust land and that land being developed and transportation and whatever, and this is the sump down here where we live, that that development will impact our air quality. Another thing, and I know this is, can I say just a couple more things?
Wrap it up, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. In reading the plan, there are several references to small town quality. And I found, and the desire to maintain those, but I found difficulty in visualizing Cottonwood as a small town. We have two big box stores, two national grocery chain stores, additional regional grocery store, et cetera, et cetera, three shopping centers and several shopping malls. To me, our commercial districts do not contribute to a definition of a small town. Cottonwood citizens tend to be organized around other members of the community who share their same interests rather than around neighborhoods. We do live in neighborhoods, but most of us reach out beyond those neighborhoods to do things with people that we enjoy doing. We don't all live in that neighborhood where our interests are. It's also the strong desire of Cottonwood to grow in the next 10 years. Mesquite Hills will be filled out as well as Gray Fox. Bella Montana may be mostly developed with a commercial zone at Cornville Road and 89A and possibly franchises coming in, apple woods, apple seeds, whatever. And if Cottonwood only consisted of old town and everybody shopped in the same area, it was a small neighborhood, everybody knew each other, you greeted each one on the street, you knew, to me, that's a small town. This is more a small city. And I had difficulty following those small town qualities that, you know, to me, they just were too ambiguous to make any sense. And I think just like improvement districts, community parks, if you aren't honest in what you say, it really distracts from the document. And I think to try to define Cottonwood as large as we are, as anticipated to grow larger, I think that, again, kind of, you might say, degrades a little bit the document by trying to define us as a small town. To me, we're a small city. Or maybe we are in a small city, but we certainly are in a small town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Small town to me is Manila, Iowa, population, well, when I was there 28 years ago, it was probably around 1,000, now it's like around 600. That's a small town.
Just to clarify, this has nothing to do with size.
With size.
This has to do with qualities. And the intent is to keep that small town quality. And, you know, an example of that is Scottsdale, who was 220,000. They had their, in their general plan, they talked about hometown qualities, a place where people would always think fondly of and want to go back to. And, you know, so it's really a descriptor, not really something that relates to size.
I was working out of two plans. First, I downloaded the one off of the city's website and I worked in that for some chapters. And then I couldn't get Matt's link to work, but IT helped me figure that out. So then I downloaded the one that was with our packet and I guess they're a teeny bit different, but I have my notes and the small town, you know, that's very described in this document as, you know, it's the friendliness of a small town. It's all kinds of things, but it really can't talk about actual size because even though a lot of people would like it to be actual size, they don't want it to change, it's not really, I mean, I moved to Arizona in 1953, it changed.
Yeah, the general plan is really defining qualities. It's not defining size, so.
It's a literal interpretation.
The other two items that Dr. Richards brought up is just recently, the council was talking about, or maybe it was Rudy talking about improvement districts. And improvement districts are a possibility.
Absolutely.
And you certainly wouldn't want to take them out because it may be a funding option that is looked at sometime down the road.
Well, this is for a neighborhood who might really love to have sidewalks and streets. And obviously, our budget isn't going to build, at our meeting, our work session, we looked at 2028 and that wasn't even all the sidewalks that we need. So, you know, not in my lifetime will this happen. So it's, if a community or a neighborhood really wanted upgrades, they could create the improvement district. The city council could help them. Working for the county years back, some folks over in Lake Monizuma wanted some streets and sidewalks. And so I think someone, the county helped them, you know, but they didn't have to do all of it. So it was a collaboration with the government and the people. So it gives the people an option if they would like to see their sidewalk or their street before 2028, they could, or longer, they could create a district, ask the city to create one. So it doesn't have to be, it's totally up to the citizens, the people, the neighbors. And so it's just saying that this is one way that we're able to, you know, do something like this sooner is through the collaborative partnership of the neighborhood and the city, which would be an improvement district.
And then in relationship to the park, we still have a lot of area in the city that is developable, state trust land in particular. We're looking at other large parcels of state trust land. The opportunity for a 5, 10, 15 acre park is still out there and in fact, we budget. In our five-year capital plan, we usually budget for the purchase of land to create a large park. Now, we keep pushing it out because the need hasn't really demonstrated itself that significantly yet. And the council is also looking to fund a Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment so we can, you know, really determine what the future rec needs are. But certainly, another large park is certainly a possibility.
Always looking for thoughts and ideas. I know it's really hard. I mean, the city spends a large proportion of its budget, more so than I think a lot of communities do on parks and recreation. And, you know, like the little Viejo Park in my neighborhood, that's been on the drawing board to get a playground equipment for years. And at the end of every budget year, there's never any money. So it's, you know, the general plan is a dream kind of and a vision and as funds can be allocated, you know, those are great ideas. Get some parks in other parts of town, I think Dr. Bob is trying to share. Other opportunities, maybe for children and such that don't have parents that can drive them across town to a park, they might have a park in their neighborhood. So I think those are some admirable goals for the future. Thank you, Dr. Bob. Okay, so Mr. Estes.
Good evening. Here's your own counsel. We've had a talk about water and I'm here to talk a little bit about water. As you know, I was on the committee that helped put this plan together and I want to just first of all say that it was a pleasure to do that, an honor to do that, and that you should be proud of the document that came out of it. I think it's great work in many, many ways. Like any document, however, anyone that I've ever written, the next time I look at it, even though I've sent the letter off or I've done something, I've found things that I would wish I had said. And so I wish I come today to kind of share some of that with you. And this is about particularly, I throw your attention to page nine of the Water Element, Goal WR1, Objective 1.1. And it reads, assist the Yavapai County Water Advisory Committee and Verde Watershed Association in their continuing water study and monitoring programs and in developing a comprehensive water budget for the Verde Valley communities.
And where are you?
Page nine of the Water Element.
And that is chapter 10 or?
What is that, 12?
Eight?
I'm sorry, don't listen to me.
Eight, 10. Okay, when I'm looking down here, I'm trying to find where you're at to help me better understand.
It's the Water Element and it's page, whatever chapter that is.
This thing is a difficult.
Water resources in chapter eight.
Eight?
Okay. It'll be page nine of chapter eight.
Okay, eight dash nine. Okay, I'm there.
Okay, the first goal, WR1, Objective 1.1, and under that 1.1A.
Everybody has a little bit different version, I think.
This is the one that's posted for the public.
Right. 8.9, my 8.9's talking about TMDLs.
So, oh, 8.1A, okay. So, that's changed quite a bit since you posted this on the Internet.
This is updated, this comes off, you might have had it older.
I just looked it up this afternoon. Okay. So, all right, I will, I'll read from what, from this version. Support regional and statewide efforts related to planning, managing, developing, and serving water resources within the Verde Valley. Okay? This is totally different than what I was looking at and came to comment on, which is posted for the public. And I would suggest then, my first recommendation is the council make sure that what is posted online is up to date. That's just what the public comes to respond to, and that's what I'm here to respond to. And I need to know what...
I think we have the same things, but they're just, because of other changes, they don't seem to be on the same page.
This is how it's even...
So, you're talking about the WAC?
I need to clarify this. This WR and Objective 1.1 was from the 2003 general plan, which is also online.
Oh, you're kidding?
And just below, we have the proposed, and as to be, so people can compare, consistently kept the current plan. It says 2003 plan.
So, what I'm reading here from the 2003 plan talks about a water budget? I don't think we had that in that 2003 plan.
I don't know. There's nothing that I had ever written that described those goals.
There was a water budget in the 2003.
This code here...
This code, okay.
Is from the previous plan.
Okay.
I don't know what it says there.
All right, fine. I guess then, what I will do, instead of then specifically relate to a particular objective, is that I'm asking that the council consider amending this plan to include not just the mention of a water budget or collaborating regionally to create a water budget, but to actually create its own water budget. And to do so, I would suggest that it, instead of waiting to collaborate with other communities to see what they do and to gather more information and data, I believe that most people really believe that the water circumstances in the Verde Valley require the greatest attention. And I want to thank Councilman Alinsky for bringing up that particular detail. But speaking of a water budget, that's a larger, a much larger calculation. And essentially, it is, when one has a family budget, one has, knows or has some sense of what their income's going to be. And that's what, we should have some sense of what our water capability is. And if I could have just a little more time because of the confusion, I appreciate it.
A couple minutes, if you could wrap it up.
What I'm asking council to consider is to, is to make sure that there is a water budget aspect in the goals and that that water budget, consider all the appropriate, all the available data, particularly from the groundwater model from, that has recently been released from the federal government, as well as from what is known as the Sea Worms Report, which is the central Yavapai Highlands. Can't remember all the words that in it, but it is a great deal of detail with respect to available water resources. Use the available best science to begin actually budgeting so that we can determine, have some sense of what our income is, and not just set the budget, but plan to balance that budget. And there are a number of things, including conservation, but over and above conservation, that can be done. And many, many, many communities who are in worse water circumstances than Cottonwood are taking those measures, not just out of crisis, but out of recognition that there would be a crisis coming if they do not take these measures. And I would just ask you to definitely consider, including the development of a water budget with ultimately the expectation that, drawing a line in the sand and as soon as possible, that we will not exceed that amount of water pumping from now into perpetuity. And what that does is that challenges you technologically, it challenges you politically. And I would say that if there's any community in this entire state that's capable of rising that challenge, the city of Cottonwood has shown that they can do that, and I would fully expect that you would be able to take up that challenge. So, I'm asking for a water budget, water budget that is balanceable, and a water budget that sets a baseline as soon as possible, preferably within the first year of this plan. That that would be the baseline beyond which we would not continue to pump. There are technologies, and we've offered, if you look in your appendix, offered a suite of activities that can happen to support an effort that would make sure a water budget gets balanced.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Chris Jensen, Mr. Jensen?
Madam Mayor, Town Counsel. My concerns are much the same as Steve Estes. I can read my short comment here. Said, "I suggest the inclusion of a water budget in the Cottonwood General Plan because of some disturbing signs with respect to the water supply sustainability for Cottonwood. Based on the ADWR report, the recently released strategic vision for water supply sustainability." It makes many important points, but two that I'm referring to now are, one, that the water levels in Cottonwood and Clarkdale have dropped by 20 to 40 feet over the last few years due to municipal and industrial pumping. It also says...
And where are you reading from?
The, this was on, out of chapter, I'm going to say, page 19-2.
Okay. Thank you.
That's out of the, out of the ADWR report.
Oh, the ADWR, it's not out...
Unless you have that in front of you.
I don't have it in front of me.
And then, on page 19-8, Chapter 19, Page 8, it also says, "The Verde River is under threat due to groundwater mining in the communities along the Verde River." A lot of people think here in the river, here in Cottonwood, that we get our water directly from the river, while we don't. But in essence, we do, because if we pump that water as it's coming downslope, whether it's, you know, subterranean water that is eventually going to get to the river, if we're pumping all that water before it gets to the river, we're in effect draining the Verde River, too. A water budget would lead, would highlight water supply problems and lead to a sustainable water supply for Cottonwood and the general area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from members of the public? Yes, Mr. Williams.
Did I miss you?
Well, I was on the call with public.
Oh, you, okay. So, you had, you had two.
Yeah.
All right.
If you'll indulge me for a second time.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. First of all, I'd like to thank you also for the opportunity to serve on the advisory committee and on the Planning and Zoning Commission to, and the implementation of this general plan. It's been quite a job, and staff has just done a remarkable job in putting it together. I'm here tonight, after last night's public meeting with planning and zoning, we considered the new Section 12 Economic Development for the first time. And I had some comments which I wanted to share with you tonight. I want to say that the staff was there, Casey, Charlie, Bear, they were all very receptive, you know, to these comments, and I wanted to pass them on along to you. So, I've written down a few things about that. Again, we got our first look at it last night for the first time. I had hoped we'd looked at it many months before, but for some reason, it wasn't part of it. Glad to see it is part of the general...
That came from a comment from Mr. Rosetta.
Yeah. And that's good. I'm glad, I concur, that it should be part of the general plan. And looking at that section, it was apparently mirrors the existing city five-year economic plan as Charlie related to try to put this together in two weeks. Section appears to be very comprehensive, covers the primary areas of community economic development with one glaring admission, in my opinion. There's not one word in that document that relates to retirees and the contributions we make to this community and market area. Or any desire to attempt to attract future retirees to this community. 26% of our population in Cottonwood is retirees, and thank you for the resolution for us old people. I appreciate that, the concerns of the city. Yes, very nice. But it has to be one of the highest percentages of any incorporated area in Arizona. Most of us moved here, and most of us have moved here as retirees. We're not, we didn't grow up and retire in the community. We've moved here for many different reasons. The past economic growth of this community has been greatly influenced by this in-migration. New construction, new medical facilities, expanded retail, et cetera. The economic impact of retirees' spending, their new outside income in Cottonwood is enormous in so many areas, not to mention the impact of our medical insurance dollars and countless hours of free volunteerism. Retirement is considered a clean industry, which has minimal negative effect on the impact on the community. We don't impact the schools, we rather provide much-needed funding with our property taxes. We tend to have minimum contact with the police department, but we may use the fire department in time of emergencies. We impact our medical facilities, but in a very positive way, with all of our medical insurance and Medicare coverage. A lot of dollars, millions of dollars pours into this medical community, which has helped grow that facility and the doctors in this town. I commend the city for all of the excellent facilities that it's provided for seniors and others. I think it's just really great, speaks very highly of the community in regard for retirees. It's definitely one of the major selling points that your economic development people can use in attracting new retirees to our city. You stress the need for diversity in our community, and I couldn't agree more. No one wants to see Cottonwood become Sun City North. Many of us moved here in the past because of our diversity of this community. We like to have children and kids and all of various people. But also, I must submit to you that retirees moving here from all over the parts of the country and the world, with all of our many varied life experiences, add to this diversity and enhance enrichment of the community. With baby boomers retiring out there in record numbers, there's a treasure trove of potential viable new, basically self-supporting residents for our community. Why would you not ignore them as an invaluable source of economic growth in our economic planning? I strongly urge you to add a retiree goal to the existing seven focus points of the city economic plan, and also in Section 12 of the proposed general plan. I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Greatly appreciated, everybody's input. Anyone else want to talk during the hearing? Okay, then we'll close the floor to the public and close the hearing at this time. Is there anything else the council wants to discuss on this item? It doesn't require any action. So, thank you all very much for being here and sharing your thoughts and suggestions. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and move on to the county's request for city support for the county's application for a federal grant to construct a new trailhead and trail within the city limits near the corner of 89A and Zaleski Road. Okay, let me get to that one. Mr. Bartosz, are you covering that one?
You know, and since Councilman Pratt isn't here tonight, I'm going to say that this is probably a no-brainer. But if I can get my new computer to work here. We were contacted by the county. They are in the process of building a trail and a trailhead. The trailhead is actually at Highway 89A and Zaleski Road. And when they started looking at it, they realized that the trailhead would be actually in the city of Cottonwood, although it's on Forest Service land. They felt that they needed to ask the city for our support for the trailhead at that location. They are working on trying to get a Title II federal grant for the construction of this trail. And this is probably more of a formality. They're not asking for any funding from the city, just our concurrence with the county and the Forest Service that that would be a good location for a trailhead. Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any comments or questions for this no-brainer item? We always like to collaborate with the county, and they help us and we help them, and so that benefits the citizens of Cottonwood also.
A no-brainer may require no comments.
Any comments from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Yavapai County's plan to develop a new trailhead and trail that would begin near the corner of Zaleski Road and 89A, and to support the county's application for a federal Title II grant for that purpose.
Second. Okay, Mr. Alinsky made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? I move to pay the claims.
Oh, mayor, I'm sorry.
You can't, you can't sit down.
No, no, it's okay. I'm just going to abstain from this vote. I would normally step down, but we don't have enough for a quorum.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we really can't even vote on it?
Well, I've advised Councilman Dowling because it's the claims and adjustments, and it's the city paying its bills. He can sit and help constitute the quorum.
Okay. But he's abstaining.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you made the motion?
No, you made a motion, actually. You did.
Oh, okay. I did, didn't I? Yes, I did. I made the motion. Would someone like to second it? I'll second it. The vice mayor seconded it, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn. The mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.